All right, and I'm still gonna be promoting people over to the panelists. So if you see somebody that I need to promote over, y'all let me know, okay? Let me know Wesley, if you see anyone I need to promote. Okay, so listen, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for joining us on tonight. I'm very excited. I've already told my guest tags excited I am to have them with us tonight. This is Drew County NAACP Branch sixty forty-two, and I am President Clarissa Pace. Tonight happens to be part two of our Economic Development Virtual Town Hall Meetings. Our goal when we started part one, and we just started this effort period, is to be able to help our community grow, okay, and increase in economics. Last week when we talked, we had some statistics to show where we are in the community, both young, young adults and elders. We found out a lot of information. But overall, and I think it's probably common, African-American people are generally behind when it comes to economic growth. We might do well in certain areas, certain parts of the country, or maybe if we have our own country like Africa, you know, we're over there. But over here in America, the statistics still show us that we are behind. And we, you know, in discussing, in discussing, a lot of times when we talk about being behind, we're not really blaming anybody for being behind. Me and another constituent was having a conversation and we were saying, you know, it kind of comes with our past because there are other people, other races of people who have this spirit of privilege, okay? They, they are raised in the fact that they should grow, their, their wealth should grow. They should go to college, they should have businesses, they should have good jobs paying types, you know, so. And then some of us, you know, because we came over through slavery and all that, we know that we went through a process in which we were oppressed to keep from getting to the wealth that was actually created for us and that we have actually had in our hands, was stolen from us. So it's kind of like an age-old process that is sometimes it comes because we're unaware that we have more opportunities to grow economically and to help our community grow. If you'll take around and just kind of do your own survey, when it comes to southeast Arkansas, when it comes to the Delta, when it comes to rural Arkansas where we live in Monticello, Hamburg, Crossit, Dermott, McGee, starting at Pine Bluff, you can see we need help. Okay, it doesn't take a genius to know that we need help. We have, in education, we need help. Our community, our parents, our children need help. Everybody needs help. And so when we started this economic development, we, we're not sure exactly who all we may help from sharing this information. However, I equate it back to what we do because I'm a preacher too, I'm a preacher first. If I just, if we just reach one, then we have done our job, okay? And so we, but we don't want to just be an organization who is stalemated, who has a name and we're just happy-go-lucky being members, but we actually want to make a difference. And we believe that economic development will make a difference, not only for personal household, but it will make a difference for our community and it will make a difference for our black people and people of color, which is what our mission is about, okay? Equity and justice and equality. So tonight, we are just really, really glad to have part two and have the guests that we have to share information with us. I'm going to ask, I don't know, if Dr. Allen, are you able to come off mute and to have an opening prayer with us tonight?
Yes, dear Lord, we just thank you all, just evening for allowing us to come together. Thank you goodness and mercy. We pray to be with our president and our guest speakers. We pray to each person that's here on this call, we're gaining wisdom and insight and just continue to make us operate unity to better our communities in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. So we're ready to, to get started. Some of you, we have some of our executive team members here. I'm gonna start with Ms. Lou Lambert. She's in a meeting and won't be able to. She's in a church meeting, but she has joined by way of Facebook and Zoom. She won't get out, but she is on the Executive Committee. She is our Membership Life Membership Chair. Thank her for joining. We have Constance Williams tonight, who is our Assistant Secretary. She is an officer. We have Mioshi Smith, who is our Secretary of the Branch. And then Dr. Allen, Dr. Chris Allen, is actually our Economic Development Chair of this branch. Other members are here. We're excited about having them here, which is Mayor Tony Perry, yay! She's doing a super job in Wilmer. I would have to plug that. I'd say, you know, if I want to be a mayor, I want to be a mayor like Tony. And so we have Angela Anderson, who is a member. And I think on the Education Committee, we have Mr. Shawn Washington, who has joined us. And of course, we have, we have Mr. Wesley Carnicle, who is a member of the PR and Communications Committee. And I see we have a guest Stacy Erby, who is on tonight. And actually, I'm aware of Ms. Erby, so it's good to have you here and we're ready to get started, okay? First of all, let me go through and let you understand that tonight, our topic is workforce readiness and leadership development. What we want to bring to the table is, is how to choose your career, things that it take once you're working, you know, to have a good career, maybe opportunities that have been available that, that our guests here tonight can share with us. But we also want to share things like resume writing. What's a good resume? I know people who, who, yeah, I did a resume for a gentleman one time. He kept saying he was an engineer, smart, top of his class. And he was never looked at. He never, you know, and I said, well, let me see what your resume look like. Hmm, I understood then why no one was calling him for an interview. So I helped him edit that resume. And he's using it, he got a job after that and he doesn't have any problem. So we know that resume writing and having particular things on there makes a difference in how it's set up. We know that it's important in the workforce, how to have the, the right tools, attitude, all that kind of thing tonight that we're just gonna let the professionals talk about. But I want to say, when we say the word career, it's oftentimes used to refer to our professions, right? Our occupation, our trade, and our vocation. And what we find it sometimes to be startling to people to think about, okay? Even those who graduate. Sometimes, you know, you see people who are eighteen, seventeen years old and they graduate. And I was like that, like, they're like, oh, I'm so confused. I don't know what I want to do in life. You know, my, my time is, I'm generally recommending to them, you know, just chill, just take it one day at a time. Because, you know, I remember when I was confused and wasn't sure which direction I was going in. I certainly didn't expect to be in this direction. And I think it may startle some people, but we know that a career could very well define what we do for a living according to, and we choose it according to really how we want a good, you know, a living in our future. Sometimes it's chosen through our gifts and talents. We're good at it, we take off and we work at it. And then sometimes somebody says, okay, I could make a lot of money if I do such and such and so. So I'm just gonna do this for the money. But that's why we have our experts on here tonight to sort of straighten out some of this information for you and help you, whether you have graduated, just graduated, going to graduate, or whether you are one of those couch potatoes who've been wondering, okay, what should I do? Can I do it if I'm fifty? You know, can I do it if I'm thirty? Can I do it if I have a family already? You know, it, do I have enough money? Can I find finances to, to finance my education? All that kind of thing. And that's what they're here for on tonight. So thank you for that. I'm going to introduce Dr. Allen. Again, I'm gonna call on you again for your story. Dr. Allen hadn't always been Dr. Christopher Allen. And he has a wonderful story and that I think that we need to hear tonight. Dr. Allen, would you go ahead and come off mute and share your story? How you got to be Dr. Allen? What, your school story? You always tell us about school, your expectation coming here from UAM, and even some of the could have been a hindrance to where you are today. Do you mind sharing with us, please?
There you go, my fault. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you for calling me, put me on here to share. Well, you know, my background's education, you know, come from Tuscaloosa, Alabama. I always, well, I guess originally from California, but you know, education, you know, wasn't always the biggest thing. Everybody, you know, in our community, we'd be just happy just if you graduated high school, you know, and things of that nature. So, you know, I had a, you know, a rough time, you know, in school, you know, considering to be, you know, ADHD, or, you know, considering to be, and then you'd be in, in especially early room and stuff, all different things. You know, how, you know, was placed against me, but you know, just because of my environment. So, you know, by having a different environment and things, you know, I was able to, you know, just to sum it up, I was able to, by my, the change of my environment allowed me to think different, you know, going to church and being around positive role models. Let me start, you know, got me to start thinking better and positive and stuff. So I began to, you know, to make goals for myself, you know, didn't really have goals, you know. Then I thought I'm making goals, and when I did make some goals, when school became important, you know, I thought it was just about football, but realizing that, you know, someone came and kept, kept it real with me that, you know, everybody's not gonna make it in the NFL. So I had to have a backup plan. And so from there on, you know, worked my way, you know, because I was put, you know, in a resource room that allowed me to get behind in regular classes. So I had a lot of competition, but I know that where I wanted to go. So I had to work extra hard, you know, get extra tutoring and things. And from there on, you know, when I believe, to find out how I really started to learn, I just went, just, you know, went sky high from there, you know, or I began to read. I took it all the time, reading the Bible. You know, I'm not ashamed of that, but reading that, they gave me understanding how to read and comprehend, you know, and doing things. So as I began to read in my books and study and things, you know, next thing I noticed, I was able to go to college, get a scholarship. Came out with Arkansas, I thought I was gonna leave, but, you know, got connected with a lot of different people in the community. And I seen that there was a need for people in the, in the Drew County community. So that allowed me to stay here and to really do, you know, you know, as God would as well for me to be here and do things. But long story short, here's the guy, you know, I was a troubled kid in school. But once I got around, you know, positive people, you know, to think differently, like you said, it's all about, you know, our environment. And that changed and stuff. And I see how valuable things were and then getting the opportunity to learn about business and stuff that really changed my whole perspective about life and my goals. And just from there, you know, become now, you know, certified teacher. And then, you know, I just, I just became hungry. I said, I'm not gonna stop there. I went and got my master's, you could be, done my specialist degree in air leadership from Arkansas State. Then continue on to go to Grand Canyon, got my doctorate, you know, air leadership. So it's a lot of things, you know, just saying to hear someone, you know, that a lot of kids, we know, may not have hope, but you know, just by having, you know, a role model, you know, like you said, reaching that one, if somebody can reach in and pour, pour out to me and show me, you know, a perspective that this life is different, you know, versus what we see on TV. And that just helped me, you know, motivate me to become who I am today.
Oh, wow. Did y'all hear that? Special education, ADHD, all of these things. And that's why we tell our story, because somebody may have some things out there that they consider an obstacle from them growing in their career. Is there anyone who joined us online that I have not specifically spoken to that would like to share your story before we go to our guests? We're getting ready to go to the guests. Okay, well, if not, now we're going to talk to our guests tonight. I'm going to introduce them. And then I want to ask them to, one by one, tell their story. And then we're gonna come back and get them to actually share with us about career, being career-driven and all the things that we talked about and whatever they think is necessary for people to understand on tonight about their career. And then we definitely want to hear a, a good conversation about becoming that leader in your community and, and how that's done. And particularly, we have a male on here tonight that we really, really want him to speak to the males in our community and, and how this is done, okay? So tonight, our first guest is Ms. Grinda Campbell, okay? Ms. Grindel Campbell grew up in McGee, but she now lives in Monticello with her husband and daughter Alexandria, okay? She graduated from the University of Arkansas at Monticello with a Bachelor of Science in Business Education and from ASU with a Master of Science in Education, Educational Administration and Secondary. She, her principalship, now listen, she is the principal, a proud principal of junior, I mean, I'm sorry, Connor Junior High School in McGee, okay? I've been knowing her for a while. I don't want to be so formal. I've been knowing her for a while. I've been watching her grow when I first came to Monticello. And now she's grown to that particular leadership role in which we are excited to have her tonight. This is her twenty-ninth year in education. She is a member of the Arkansas Education Association, Arkansas Administrator, Education Association, and a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Say hello, Ms. Grinda, to everybody, okay? And so I'm gonna introduce and then we're gonna come back around and we want you to tell your story, okay? Y'all, listen, we're just gonna relax now. We talk, this is my girl, I'm telling you, she's, she's a worker too. And no doubt how she's gotten there. Our next guest is Mr. Detrick Lambert, okay? Detrick is a twin. He is a twin, but we love Detrick. He is the son of James and Lou Lambert of Monticello. He has been in fast food for twenty years. He has been in management for fifteen of those twenty years. He was promoted from a crew chief to the assistant manager. Then he was promoted to general manager within the five years, within the last five years. Then he traveled to other stores in the company to work. And he was promoted because, listen, I asked him, tell, tell how you got to all of this. He said he was promoted because he always is always on time. He learned all the positions he could learn to better himself with the company. And this gave him an opportunity to move up. And now, and as he always say, he's prepared, let me see, proper preparation prevents poor performance. He gonna tell you a little bit more about all of that. But I wanted him because he's local and he's local management. And, and we'll talk more about that in a minute because he got something that, that's on their door. I want y'all to pay attention to. And I will ask him to talk to that in a moment, okay? So, and we were looking for a male and he answered the call. A young black male in management position and leadership in our community. And we are proud of him to have him tonight. Our final guest tonight is Catherine Richards, okay? Catherine, I think, well, I say Catherine, Kathy, that's what's on your resume. I thought it was Catherine, okay? So Kathy, I think I'm getting you mixed up with Catherine Reynolds. I think I know two KRs, okay? But Kathy Richards, I met Kathy, ooh, I don't know how, how, how we, we crossed paths, but she used to be local. At this present time, Kathy is actually, let me talk about her achievements from her resume. She completed Auditor Lead Auditor Training Course in Atlanta, Georgia. She is a Certified Internal Auditor. She has a certificate of attainment. I don't understand what that is, SQF Institute. She'll tell you more about that. She's a member of Jefferson County Manufacturing Council. She's a member of the National Association of Colleges and Employers and a member of Arkansas Association of Colleges and Employers. Now, in her education, she is a nineteen seventy-eight graduate of the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff with a Bachelor's of Science Degree in Business Administration. She is, in twenty nineteen, she has a spiritual revelations, she's a graduate of Spiritual Revelations Theological Institute of Houston, Texas, with a Doctor of Religious Counseling. Lord, we get to find out so much. And then she graduated in twenty twenty-one from the same institution with a Doctor of Philosophy in Religious Education. How about that? So we got two-fold tonight, calling on you so we can get on that couch, okay? So, but listen, she presently, now I'm gonna just say this. She worked from two thousand six to twenty twenty-one as the Quality Manager at Hood Packaging Corporation in Monticello, okay? And she is now, she is now the Associate Director of Leadership Placement and Assessment Emerging Scholars Leadership Institute at the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff, okay? So with that being said, thank you so much Kathy for being our guest on tonight. I'm now going to turn this over to our guest and we'll start with Ms. Campbell. Ms. Campbell, can you tell us your story before you guys get ready to tell us information? How did you get to where you are today?
Well, I entered the workplace at an early age, sixteen years old. My very first job was, I don't know if you all remember JTPA, the Job Training Partnership Act. I worked on that program. My first job was a janitor. When I worked that summer with the janitors, I realized that I wanted to go to college because I, you know, nothing, nothing against being a janitor, but I, I just couldn't do it. And so my first year, I worked as a janitor. I worked because I was, it was five of us and we had to pull our weight in the family in order to have the things that we needed. And so my second year, which was my eleventh grade year, I got a chance to explore working in the courthouse in, in Deshaye County. And, you know, I, I like working in the, in the courthouse, you know, in the circuits clerk's office and the county clerk's assessor's office. And then my third year, which is my twelfth grade year, I got a chance to work at the elementary tutoring kids. And so for the next summers, I tutored and I think we were able to work on the JTPA program till we turned like maybe twenty. And so I did that and by working at the school, I developed a love and passion for students. And so back in eighty-nine, when I entered college, I went into education, business ed, because I, I wanted to be an educator. And had some problems, you know, passing the test, but I never lost the faith. I continued to take the test. I graduated from college with my undergraduate degree. And it took me six years because I never did go to summer school because I had to work, you know, in order to have money to go to school that next year. And so after I graduated with my undergraduate, I took interview and got the job on the spot at Udora High School where they employed me as the high school business teacher. And I worked several years and, well, maybe three years. And then I decided, well, I'm gonna go back and get my master's degree. So I decided, well, I'll get it in an area where, you know, I'm not in the classroom. And I decided to try this new program at ASU, which was the Leadership Program to become a principal. So it took me three years to complete the degree there and pass the test. I had to take it more than one time, but I graduated and got my degree from there in two thousand, in two thousand. And then left Udora, came to McGee and worked here. I think it was like my fifteenth or sixteenth year, became the dean and then went on and got promoted to assistant. And then in twenty twenty-one, I think I was promoted to principal. So, you know, it's a challenge, but, you know, you just have to be prayerful and open up and seek help to people, you know, in the workplace and outside of the workplace. So, you know, I enjoy, I have some very good colleagues, you know, work with Mr. Pace and some more people here in the building. And I really enjoy coming to work. It, career planning and being in a career that you enjoy on a daily basis, you know, you, you can't ask for much more. If you're not happy with your career, I mean, it's, it's not gonna be good for you. So that's kind of my story in a nutshell of how I got where I am today.
Okay, thank you, man. I got so much. You said it, I think, when you said the, the final thing, you say you enjoy going to work every day. And that's probably one of our keys. Do you think that's one of our keys to knowing that we may have found our niche or our right career is being able to enjoy it every day? Okay. Okay, all right.
I mean, some days, I mean, you, you're gonna have days that are not so good, but for the most part, you know, the good is gonna outweigh the bad.
Mm-hmm, okay, all right. Mr. Lambert, let's go to you now. Tell us how you got into this. I know I've read a little bit of it. I was, got ahead of myself. I was gonna let you do it, but you can go back over it. But what was on your mind when you got into, tell us how you grew to this fast food business? And, and you had, I'm sure you had other opportunities. Talk to us about where, how you got where you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Well, I started fast food when I got out of high school. I had other opportunities, but fast food, I guess, is where it's at. The people needed me the most, but I've been with fast food twenty years. Within the first five years, I came from crew to assistant manager. And like you said, the way I got there, you know, being on time through my mother, putting up work, they could, they could see me or whatever, which is good. I love my mom. I love her, the sense that she been standing on us since we young, doing the right thing. But growing into that, into that leadership role, it wasn't a bad transition, but it was a long kind of process because I was just really thrown in there. I was, I've been under like three or four different managers. But just learning the process, helping everybody out along the way is my thing, you know. I weren't worried about the money. I can go to different places if I wanted to, but I was working a couple of jobs at the time. But growing into this GM role, I, I embraced it because I kept seeing a lot of young guys with my color mainly, you know, coming in the wrong way. So I want to steer them in the right way. And that's how I've been the whole time. That's basically my story, a mile for the people and just try to better each and everyone on.
That's awesome and we appreciate that too. Because I, I, I have to say, I'm a fast food girl. I started, I said, anybody, anybody that really want to learn to work, start working at fast food. That was my thing. Start working in fast food. That's, my first job was at Burger King. And so, you know, yeah, yeah, Burger King, you know, I was, I, I won a contest. I was a Burger King, I was a Whopper Queen, you know. Yeah, yeah, Burger King. You know, I was a, I, I won a contest. I was a Burger King, I was a Whopper Queen, you know, down in Louisiana. You know, which reminds me, you know, anything you do, wherever you are, you do your best at it. So I'm like you, my mom. You know, always taught us to do our best at it. So I could hook up them whoppers in no time and feed a, a school bus, two or three of them if they came by. And I was the only one on the ship. But I do know, fast food, and we gonna get back to you talking about it, is not something that's that easy. Which is sometimes on people's minds and I'm, we gonna speak to that in a moment. So thank you for your story, cause I want you to speak to that. Alright, now we have Ms. Kathy Richards. Uh go ahead and share your story with us, Kathy.
Okay, first I'll start by saying good afternoon to everyone. Uh to Ms. Campbell and Mr. Lambert, your stories are very inspirational. You know, the word of God tells us to despise not small beginning. So you have shown how you overcame all of those obstacles and didn't let your present situation dictate your future destination. And so that is in itself is, is noteworthy. Um, as President Pace said, uh I started at the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. Graduated with a bachelor's degree in business administration with a concentration in accounting. Uh, I've worked in, I worked as a radio operator at the Pine Bluff Police Department. Worked in accounting and the purchasing areas at Simmons First National Bank. Uh, the majority of my career experience has been in quality management in the manufacturing sector. Sixteen of those years, as she mentioned, was in the Monticello community at uh Hood Package. About two years ago, I started contemplating retirement. And honestly, I had reached uh the goals pretty much that I had set for myself as far as financially. But when I thought over my life, I realized that I had not actually had the impact on my community and on the world that I wanted to have. So I started thinking about how can I affect or use the experiences that I have had throughout the years to help the generation of, of uh people that are coming behind me. So a position opened up at the University of Arkansas and I was contacted. I've been blessed in, in all the jobs that I have or positions that I have held. I actually have not applied for any. It was always where the employer sought me out. And so and same with this case, I was uh tapped and asked if I would come and apply for a position in the Career Services Department at UAPB. And I worked there for about a year and a half. And I was taking care of my mother and she transitioned back in February. And at that time, I just thought, you know, I'm done. You know, I'm just gonna come home and let that be it. But uh the Emerging Scholars and Leadership Institute um uh was founded. And I was called again and asked to come and participate in that initiative. So after a lot of back and forth with them, I finally accepted the uh the position. And which now, as she said, is Associate Director for Leadership Placement and Assessment. In this role, I'm responsible for contacting employers and establishing partnerships uh in hopes of internship oppo- opportunities for our students. I'm also responsible for performance assessment. Uh I do assessments with the students and the employers in hopes of finding directions that our program needs to take in order to improve. So actually, I am thoroughly enjoying this position. It really speaks to the impact that I desire to have on young people. Um, and it's just, it's just really, I feel like I am fulfilling the purpose that God put me on the earth to do. For that, so for that, I'm thankful that I have the opportunity to do.
Well, I, I, I hope that many people are paying attention to you, Ms. Richards, because listening to your history, you actually seem like you have crossed different, uh what'd you say, job descriptions, maybe having to relearn like a dispatcher. I'm looking at you going dispatch account. How did dispatch account? Quality control, all of these, these, you know, how you've grown and stepped up to where you are now, which you know, I'm not gonna ask your age, which still being called on, you know, at the age that we're at, which is sometimes challenging. Or I've heard people say, well, it's challenging, nobody's gonna hire me, you know, uh at this point and so forth. But I do wanna ask you a question as I, as I listen to all of that. Have you ever been apprehensive? You, like, my husband has that testimony that people have just called him. He told my kids, you know, he's told my kids time and time again, I just went to work. You know, got, got out of college, went to work, and then I just started getting calls, you know. And I'm, I'm gonna come back to that. I just wanna deal with that, how you can just get those calls, what kind of quality. Y'all think about that? And uh uh of worker you must be, that you just get that call to come over here and work for someone. But my question to you is, has there ever been any major apprehension? And you switching those roles and those job descriptions when you were called on? And, and perhaps you can speak to how you overcame them if there were any?
Apprehension actually is a mild way of putting it. I was, was thoroughly nerve wracked, actually, uh especially from making the transition after spending thirty years in the manufacturing environment and, and quality. And then moving over to the higher ed space. I mean, it meant uh learning new software. I had to really just kind of do away with everything that I had learned. Uh as I was thinking about um the presentation for the night, I realized that I have gone from the era of the yellow envelope, what we call inter-office communication, where you would put uh whatever it was, you were trying to communicate with your coworkers in an envelope and somebody picked it up and took it to the office. Uh from that era to uh emails and texts. And from that to now Google Groups, Google Documents, Google Sheets. All of this is, is very, very new. It's also very challenging to me. And I believe that as long as we are on the earth, there's always an opportunity to have an impact. There's always an opportunity to grow. Once I thought that I had the skills down to do a, a fantastic presentation on PowerPoint, now everybody's using Canva. So it's always something new that you can learn. And, and I'm just excited to be able to, to make those kinds of transitions.
Wow, you, you said it. You said it. I was the same way with PowerPoint. But I will say this, and I'm getting ready to go uh to you, Ms. Campbell, uh so you can just give your presentation in your own way tonight. Uh, I will say this, uh one of the things you, you were in, the manufacturing company, uh Mills and so forth. I did remember that when I moved to Monticello, someone said, um Clarissa, they're hiring at Burlington. You know, Burlington Industries, I think you would do well at Burlington. And I, I probably would have, but when I got out there and saw it was a plant, I don't know, somebody, I said, oh no. I thought my grandmother said, well, I don't wanna be that jalous. Thinking, no, I don't wanna be on the floor, cause I'm from El Dorado and I was used to Cooper Rubber Plant and uh it's Prescolite and, and people working hard. And I was like, no, I already knew at an early age, I don't wanna work like that. So, and I think we have somebody else, she can't tell you about it tonight, but Ms. Lambert, who was at Burlington, that switched her whole career out of uh manufacturing. So we appreciate you. We appreciate you. So now we're gonna go to Grunde. We're gonna let all of our guests present to you uh their information tonight on just how uh choosing your career and the, the value and the things that uh you will need to put in place in order to choose in that career. Ms. Campbell, uh back to you. You, you, you're um
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, like I, like I said earlier, uh career planning is essential. Um, time and time again, we fail to look at the big picture of things when uh making decisions about a career. Um, we have a tendency to uh pursue those careers, maybe that our parents uh did. Uh for example, if our mom was a nurse, you know, we had a tendency of becoming a nurse. If, if dad was a farmer, uh the sons had a tendency of being a farmer. Uh, certain careers are not for everyone. You should choose a uh career that is centered around uh your interests and those things that you like to do. Uh, it might deal with people, information, technology. Uh choose those things that you value and uh that fits your character. So, once you look into a career, uh ask yourself, what uh job-specific skills or transferable skills do I possess for this career? Uh what job-specific uh skills do I have? Necessarily, necessary to uh do a particular job. Can I, for example, uh balance a budget? Can I program a computer? Uh what transferable uh skills do I have? Uh, transferable skills are those uh skills that uh we use in school and on most uh jobs, uh such as communication, listening skills, critical thinking skills, just to name a few. I always tell uh my students, never pick a career because of the amount of money that you make. A lot of time, people end up in high-paying jobs are not always happy. Money is great, but you want to uh pursue that career that you will enjoy getting up every morning or afternoon going to. There are uh many, many careers uh choices out there right here in Arkansas that you can choose, that you don't even have to have a uh degree that you can make just as much money as someone with the degree. Uh some of the hot um jobs uh that are available are in the hospitality uh industry. We, we're needing those truck drivers, welders, uh heating and air uh people, welders, uh certified nurses assistants, uh office clerk, and my favorite janitorial uh services. So um a couple of online res- resources that I use with my students uh in classes uh that were really helpful was the Occupational Outlook Handbook. Uh where they learn the different uh about the work environment, uh what skills they needed, uh what license, um you know, those basic things that they needed to know uh about a career. And then uh the next uh resource that they uh used was uh ONET, which basically told you the same thing. But um it added those jobs that uh had a bright future and those that uh did not have a, a bright future. Uh, back in college, I could remember uh people uh majoring in things. Uh, and once they got out of college, they had a hard time, you know, trying to find a job. So um I tell my students to make sure that you research that career. And you know, once you graduate, jobs are gonna be plentiful uh in that particular field. So once uh we learn about, you know, we research and learn about careers, uh the next thing we do is create uh resumes for themselves. And I tell them that, you know, a resume is like uh a document that, I mean, it's, it's ongoing. You're gonna steadily change your, or add to your resume. There are three types, you know, the functional resume, uh this type resume uh is one that uh first-time job seekers uh would create. It capitalizes on their uh work experience and the skills that they have. Those are the ones that uh basically my, my students uh would create since they were new to the uh workforce. Those that had uh jobs, which, you know, a few had jobs, uh we created the second type, which is chronological uh resume. Uh, and most of the adults, you know, this is uh one of the resumes that they would create. It's the most common and it illustrates uh the progress that one has made towards their uh career objective through their employment history. They list their most recent work experiences first, followed by the next most uh experience. And uh it's best to use this type if they want, want to, or if you want to demonstrate uh within your desired uh career field. And then that last one is a um combination uh resume, which um presents knowledge, uh skills and abilities gained from work in uh reverse chronological order. And um this format is best if uh one has varied uh employment history or wish to include volunteer or intern uh experience. And some of, some tips um on creating uh resumes, uh try and keep your resume to one or two pages, no more. Uh always include a cover letter with your resume. Uh this tells the empor- employer uh what makes you better suited for the job uh than your competitor and how your skills can help the company succeed. Uh, before you uh send out a resume, make sure that you proofread. Proofread is important because uh if there's a lot of errors uh that uh tells the employer that, you know, you don't take time to uh go back and check over it. Make sure that you proofread or get someone else to proofread your uh resume. Another uh tip, don't include personal information such as your age, gender, uh marital status, race, height and weight. Sometime uh people want to include a picture. I don't know if, if this is a, a new thing that's going on. But sometime if, you know, you put a picture on your resume, it may not be a good thing to do because people will uh, you know, know who you, well. Also, uh when you get ready to email your uh resume, make sure that it is a professional uh email address. You know, you don't wanna uh u- u- use an email like foxy mama at yahoo dot com. You know, make sure that it's professional. Uh, keep your fonts uh it readable. Make sure that they're readable when you type up your um, your resume. Use uh Arial, Arial, uh Helvetica, uh ten or twelve point. I basically like uh twelve point, it's a little bit more uh larger. Don't use scripts or underline. Once your uh resume is perfected, printed out on some uh good quality heavy bond paper, white or all white. And uh try and use, it recommends using uh matching envelopes. But do not fold your resume or your cover letter when you're uh mailing it in. And the last thing, you always want to include your references. And the last thing, you always want to include your references. Uh, one thing, when we have uh, people apply in education uh, here lately, we came across a few that didn't list uh, references. So, make sure that you always uh, list your references, make sure that you have uh, a good uh, address, uh, phone number, uh, that, you know, they can be uh, reached. So, um, those are some of the tips for um, resumes.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm, I, I kinda laugh cuz I'm like, boy, did we get lucky on some of the stuff. But you know, I do wanna speak to the fact that you said, because this, this is in ACP, right? Uh, and, and, and we're not afraid, this is, this is who we're talking about. Uh, we want to spread equity in our community. Uh, so, when you mentioned about putting the, the photograph on the resume, you know, uh, yes, because all I can think of now is the affirmative action uh, which was just voted down and how it will actually affect us in all of this. And I also think of one young lady who used to work with me, who says that her name was, uh, we always called her, you know, her uh, nickname, right, rather, her first name. And she had to change her name because when she went to Little Rock, uh, they judged her on her name. Okay, so then she had to put her name differently in order to be called. So, I don't think it's harsh for us to be aware that there are sometimes, if you agree or disagree, y'all can let me know, but there are some times when, as black people or people of color, when our resume has to look a little different uh, than what everybody else's resume looked like because we could be judged on name, where you live, uh, what your picture looked like. I, I'm, I'ma confess, my, my son has a job and, and I did a resume for him. I purposely put his, a particular picture on there because he looked professional. Okay, in the area that he was going in. And that was the only reason I did, I was just kinda like, okay, holy ghost, like, put that, you know, take that and I put that on there, he's got the job. But that's not always the case. I always kinda look at, at kinda measure out what and when you should do that. So, I don't know how this affirmative action is going to affect us. Can you, Ms. Campbell, you know, have you been keeping up with that? And can you speak to an idea of how you, how that's gonna mesh into this resume and this career that we are now moving out in?
Uh, with the picture on the resume?
Or, yes, or just how we're, we're dressing up this resume to get through the doors.
Me personally, I, 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 you know, different strokes for different folks. Sometimes people use it against you with the picture on, on your resume. Uh, some uh, do not, uh.
Okay, we'll keep it safe for your sake, but. For your sake, but I can say it, I work for myself, my career is self, okay? So, can't nobody come close my doors and cut my paycheck off? And I'm president in ACP and this is what we discussed, right, comfortably, is that we, we, we hear these horror stories all the time. And I will tell you, one of the reasons I, I'm from Eldorado, okay, Eldorado, Arkansas. And although I started at Burger King, okay, I felt this administrative spirit in me, I did, I couldn't identify it then. But I went to places like the doctor's offices and things of that nature to go and get a job. And then I was a, a, a student, I'm, I'm top of the line on everything I do. And I go in here and then I have seen my Caucasian friends go walk through the door and people have given them jobs. And I know they were the same ones that, that was in the lower level classes, ballet, spelling and everything else. But they got what I thought I should have had. And I'ma tell you now, I've been discouraged from that situation. And the only door I could go through in town at that particular time was fast food. Not saying anything wrong, I needed a job, right? But I knew, I didn't how to, know how to identify it, but for some reason I kept saying, I belong in the office. You know, I kept thinking in my mind, I belong in the office, I can wait on people, I can help people, I can serve people, I can greet people. But that privilege was not given to me and not even given to me when I came to Monticello and I walked through several doors to do the same thing. But now what you just said tonight, uh, we didn't have, um, I, I didn't, I, I somehow I missed that training, I missed that memo on how I might should have fixed myself up when I went. But I do think that we're in a day and age where we might want to uh, make sure that our people of color understand that uh, it's competition without us wanting competition. Okay, I'ma go on and go to uh, Mr. Dedrick now cuz I don't wanna get myself and nobody else in trouble tonight. But uh, he's in a totally, you know, a different industry. I want him to speak to this career in the industry he's in or any way he wants to bring that in people getting through your doors and in this industry.
Well, working fast food, uh, we have really more interviews than just about anybody cuz it's a revolving door. Um, like, when you, when you come in for an interview, I try to enlighten people on how you should be dressed or prepare yourself. If y'all only knew the half of the people that come in there, how they look, I had, I don't even give interviews when they come looking the same way. Like, they flip flops and uh, look like you about to go to the club or, or you just woke up out the bed, things like that. No, you always look presentable. It, it's not about what brand clothes and none of that, it's how you present yourself. Those clothes, tha- that's what we look at, things like that. You have to be punctual, you know, uh, look them in the eye when you talk to them, have a good eye contact with that person, you know, let them know you're listening and paying attention. Like, that's number one thing on our end is social development too, cuz a lot of people not, not equipped or talking to other people like that. So, I try to help people when they come in, I really don't shun them away, even if I don't give the interview, I let them know why. And I try to give them a chance to make that up, you know, cuz some people not taught or, or prepared. Like I said, proper preparation prevents poor performance. If you prepare well, your performance will be high. You know, you never know who's watching or who looking at you. Cuz when I first started, I would, I was in it for the, just get a job, make me some money, buy me some shoes or whatever. But people saw the potential in me, helped me out and uh, gave me the tools I need to succeed. So, I'm, I'm trying to pass it down to the next person. So, anyone that's uh, trying to get a job or looking for a job, even if I'm not even hiring, just call me and I'll try to help you on what you need to be helped on. You know, that was a good point on Ms. Campbell when she was talking about the resume. Cuz only one percent of people bring a resume. And I li- I always looked at it like, that's kinda odd to me. That's one thing my mom always taught me, son, keep your resume, I don't care if you have one job, put your resume together. Uh, that's a good quality to have, you know, um. Also, uh, whatever your job or career you looking at, you have to wanna do. You know, in order to learn that job, to learn the skills, you have to wanna do it. You have to wanna uh, get in tune to know the job, that's the only way you gonna do the job, right? What else I had written down? Another thing, like, when you come in on an interview and you sitting down, listening and talking, give some, some type of feedback. Give some type of feedback on, on just with the whole general conversation about it. Let a person know, like I said, you in tune and you want the job. You, you never know who's willing to help if you try to help yourself first, you know. Uh, and I, I'm willing to help anybody who help theyself, you know, that's all, what I'm all about, just helping us.
Oh, that is amazing because what I, I see and that is sometimes our, our, our children are walking out and, and you said when you started, you just kinda wanna get you some, some money to, to buy your shoes and stuff like that. Some of them are walking out doing that and they're walking up in there totally unprepared because they don't realize that every industry is important to make a great impression, no matter who or where it is. You know, I think about in the industry, when I did start off in there, I've learned that uh, there are fast food companies who actually provide scholarships for your growth. There are other jobs, when I was at uh, Potlatch as the administrative assistant, I was able to expand my education because the job paid for me to go back to school and I didn't necessarily have to be a secretary or whatever, whatever I was doing, they believed in that. So, uh, uh, what do you, so, when you say give feedback or no, let's go back to social development, I want two things and then we're gonna move on. Uh, ooh, it's a whole lot you said, you talked about punctuality, oh my god. So, when you looking at your employees getting to work, what do you think is good punctuality to speak to that?
Well, you know, ev- everything ain't no good day, everybody know that, every, you know, but cuz you having a bad day don't mean you can, you, you have to bring somebody else down, you feel what I'm saying? So, if, if I'm coming to work, if I got the job, if I'm coming to work, I'ma speak, I'm happy, I'm nice, no matter how my day going. It, it is, is basically like, someone could come in sad and they see you happy and energetic. That might rub off on them and make their day even better cuz I done had this several times. People, I don't even know they'll pull me to the side, you know, just thanking me. And I, really, they helped me cuz my day was going bad at the time. So, you never know, like I said, you never know who's watching, somebody always watching and, and, and around to, to see what's going on. And this day and age, everybody watching, so, you know, just put off a good positive energy and positive vibe.
Oh, wow, I love it, Dedrick, I could talk to you all night. All right, so we gonna go to Ms. Kathy and then we'll get a chance to wrap it up with her presentation. Come on, Ms. Kathy, share with us tonight.
Okay, I'm not going to be redundant cuz, because a lot of the things that I actually had in my presentation, I've already heard. Uh, I do want to add uh, to what Ms. Campbell was saying about the resume. Uh, it is very important that your resume is concise and that one page that she talked about. Uh, you have to keep in mind that hiring managers, you know, have other responsibilities. And so, if you have a long drawn-out resume, in a lot of cases, it may just get tossed over to the side. Make sure that your rest, uh, everything that you have on your resume is pertinent to the actual position that you are applying for. Uh, that one page will sometimes mean that you have to delete some older academic credentials or, or work experience. If it's not relevant to the position that you're applying for, there's no need of you having that on your resume. Uh, she talked about uh, the grammatical and spelling errors in the cover letters. A lot of companies actually are using software now where they will download your cover letter and your resume into it and it identifies those errors that, that are in there. It will toss your resume, your cover letter out before a human person actually ever gets to see it. So, you are actually literally dead in the water before you ever get started. So, there are uh, proofreading apps that you can use, like Grammarly, uh, Rewrite, uh, that a lot of them offer a free thirty-day trial that you can download your resume or your cover letter into that will identify those errors for you. If you uh, don't feel comfortable in doing that, like she said, find someone in your community or in your household even that is uh, versed in grammar and spelling and let them proofread it. Because what you want to do is make sure, first of all, that your resume stands out above everybody else. So, taking that a step further to the interview. The interview is actually a twenty, twenty-five, thirty-minute uh, time period that you have to sell yourself. So, you want to be at your very best, highlight all of your, your uh, accomplishment. Uh, make sure that you, as Mr. Lambert was saying, arrive at least fifteen minutes early to the rest, to the interview. Uh, you know, life happens, as he said, and there'll be things that happen that keep you from uh, getting there. But make sure you make that call and let them know and make sure that the excuse that you give them is a real excuse because they've heard everything. So, that just getting there ahead of time kind of makes an impression on that employer. And that's what you really wanna do, is make that great first impression so that you stand out above all the other people who are actually applying for the job. Now, a lot of people are actually using virtual uh, platforms to conduct interviews. So, in that case, you want to make sure, well, let me back up. Make sure that when you go to an interview, as he said, you start with a firm handshake. Look your interviewer in the eye and make sure you answer every question truthfully, number one, and then to your best ability. Uh, you know, as you mentioned, the current legislation about affirmative action and everything, I can get into a whole different conversation on that.
Well, we're gonna have a town hall meeting on that one, we'll call you back.
Okay, okay, so I'm not going to talk a lot about that. But do want to avoid uh, loud colognes, um, uh, controversial hairstyles. And I know some of this may not agree with everybody that's listening to me now, but we do have to always keep in mind the region of the country that we are in and the people and the culture of that employer that you're interviewing for. So, I've actually seen situations where people come to interview for a job and when they leave, the hiring manager and other people that work there actually laugh at the person's appearance and things that they see. So, you know, if that happens, more than likely, that person is not going to get that call back. And as Mr. Lambert uh, also mentioned, if once you get the, uh, after you had your interview, you can contact the employer in um, a week or two to find out the status of the opening. If they tell you that they are still in the search mode and that they will call you back, then just wait, don't keep calling back every other day till you become a, that nuisance to the point that they don't wanna hire you because you're just bothersome. So, you just wait until you do hear from them. And if uh, perhaps you get a rejection, then you want to ask that question, as he said, to them, can you give me some feedback on what I did that I can improve on? What can I do to help me stand out above, above the rest of the people who, the rest of the applicant? And most people will be willing to share that information with you, which you can use to help uh, help you improve the next time that you uh, go on an interview. And this will also, when you make that extra effort, it kinda highlights you in that employer's mind so that when future openings come up, you may get a call back and ask to uh, to apply for those. Let's see, on the virtual interview, you wanna make sure that you are still dressed professionally, at least from the waist up. Make sure that the area that you are in is free from distractions. Uh, there's no noises or a background that may be distracting. Uh, I actually have a habit of when my watch goes off and it's a text or an email, I have a habit of looking at my watch. So, if you are one of the people that do that, turn that watch or that phone off or leave it in another room until after your interview is over. So, you can give your, all of your attention to that interview and to that interviewer. Uh, there is a question that is, that is at the end of almost every interview that you have. And that question is, do you have any questions for us? That is one question you never want to say no. So, what you do is you research the company, you can go to their website, find out what the product is that they make, uh, find out what their vision is, uh, who their partners, who their competitors are, if there are any recent headlines that um, are about them, and then jot down questions that. And then jot down questions that pertain to uh, to those, that information that you have. That shows the employer that you are really seriously interested in working for them. That is not just an application you're putting in for a job, but you're interested in them as a company. And so that in itself makes up, up an impression on that uh, employer. So I also went a bit further to uh, you get the job. And I'll just shorten it by saying, once you get a seat at the table, now you want to have a voice at the table. Don't, don't be one of those employees who is, I call them eight in the gate. You go to work for your eight hours, you do just the duties that was in your job description and nothing else. You go in, and this is for people who are aspiring to leadership position. You go in and you look for opportunities to participate on teams and committees that are assigned with somebody said they work from five thirty to five thirty. So, you know, that, that can, that can itself be uh, impressive that you're willing to put in that extra, those extra hours to accomplish the goals of that, of that uh, employer. Uh, surround yourself with people who know more than you do. Wow. You, nobody actually likes a know-it-all. But honestly, if you know more than everybody in your circle, you need to change circles. There's nobody you can grow if you know more than everybody that, that you associate with. So make sure that you uh, connect with people who, who know more about something, at least than, than you. Uh, and I'm going to skip a lot of this. Uh, for our more seasoned listeners, uh, make sure you stay up to date as much as possible with the changes in technology and trend. Our world is constantly, constantly evolving. If you're one of those people who say, this is not the way it was done or uh, we've always done it this way, you're going to find yourself left behind. So make sure you stay up to date on what is going on. And, and like you said earlier, uh, President Pace, it can be a challenge. I mean, that is, I'm, I'm not a tech savvy person. But uh, you know, get in there and learn it. If nothing else, talk to your grandchildren cuz I promise you, a lot of them already know how to do it. So just learn what's going on in the, in the technology world and, and uh, educate yourself. Always, as long as you're living on the earth, always educate yourself to learn more. Never get to the place where you stop learning because if you get there, then it's time for you to, to go to the cemetery. And also, if you want to have an impact on young people, make young people a part of your circle. All young people are not as shallow as some of us think they are. There are some that have some real serious concerns about the world that they live in. And they have some credible ideas about how to change it. So if you're working on uh, projects to improve your community, your church, your school or whatever, include those young people in that conversation. Not only it gives you fresh ideas, number one, on, on how to improve things. And it, it just gives you a better chance for success. Because after all, these are the people that are going to be working in that space that you're trying to create more or less. And so that is all I have to say. I just want to thank uh, President Pace and the Monticello NAACP for including me in this discussion. It really speaks to uh, the passion that I have for having an impact on uh, the generation that's coming behind us. I hope that you, I pray that you have success in all of your endeavors to make Monticello that community that thrive.
Oh my goodness, thank you so, so much. Listen, uh, you guys have been great. I have one more thing and I'm gonna call on Mr. Lambert because I'm telling he, he can come on mute because and you know, ladies, the reason I'm calling on him is cuz again, you know, I looked high and low for black males to stand out in our community uh, when it comes to leadership professionalism, uh, career. Uh, and, and, and to have that impact, I think we have to build our men and especially our young men. Uh, you know, I think scripture lists that old men dream dreams. You know, I ain't gonna get all into all of it, but you know, y'all got vision. And uh, and, and I believe he has a lot of vision. I do want him to speak too. And, and I guess what I'm looking for, leadership development, how, how can you help your community of black men come up in this area when we face such trying times? For when we talk, one reason we've gone to talking about jobs and careers and on any level is because we want them to make different choices on how they increase their income and their economics, if you know what I'm saying. And so how can we do that, Dedrick? What do they need to know? Uh, you're a young man, you, you're there.
Well, for the most part, a lot of them uh, basically have to see before they believe or even wanna get involved. That's with the, with my group, Monticello Growth, a lot of those, a lot of guys that's starting to getting involved now wasn't there at first. They starting to see that the, the people that they came up with, they've been in the neighborhoods and things like that, starting to make a difference. Now they wanna join, you know, they, they gotta see it before they can believe, you know. Which I don't mind getting out there on the forefront, fighting or, or doing whatever I have to do so people can see it, you know. Uh, that's the main thing. They, they don't have that role model presence in a, in, in their face to see the good that's coming out of everything. And like I tell them, uh, give me a call. I run it down to your things you need to know or to even help them on any vision or idea that they have. I don't mind aiding, assist no one. Uh, like with the trash pickup, you, you, when you came and talked to us, we got so much feedback just off of you posting your post and other people posting their thing, like the next turnout gonna be even bigger. So uh, the main thing, like I said, once they see it, they'll believe it and uh, they'll see the change. It ain't gonna be no, no quick process, you know, it don't, it don't change though. Every leader must be a good follower. So, you know. I don't mind following and uh, helping others out. Like I said, uh, once again, when they see it, they gonna, they'll step out, they'll step out.
Oh wow, I, I appreciate you said every, every leader has to be a good follower. And I think talking about our industry is that I think a lot of us probably followed something before we got to where we are. We were following, uh, especially in the blind because we didn't know where we were going and where we were going to end up. And that's just like God. I mean, just say it, it's just like God, you know, trusting Him and believing Him and He'll direct our path. Because, you know, I never knew I'd go down this road, but I do remember sitting at my desk at my administrative job and, and, and ask, and the Holy Ghost says, okay, here, here who you, I, I went to school for one thing and now I, he says you're a marketer. He spoke to me and I'm like, oh my God, really? You know, and I'm not talking about network marketing, I'm talking about the dreams and visions I was having was in that area where I help people get their information out. That's my job. That's why I can hear where you're trying to go and I can set vision and mission to it. If we keep our ears open to that and fine tuned to that, we will eventually get to the career of our choice and, and we don't have any regrets when we leave this world because we can do it. I wanna say, Dedrick, to you, as far as the uh, branch sixty forty-two, we support Monticello Growth. We support you young men who are coming up in our community. We support you and what you're doing in any way that we can be uh, a help. It's time for us to help you. I'm going to be fifty-eight, I don't mind it cuz I look cute anyway, you know what I'm saying? But I'm I'm gonna be fifty-eight years old. You know, and Ms. Kathy said, we gotta bring you young people in with us because, you know, I forget things. My husband Jerome, y'all know him. He forget things. We, we don't, we don't move like we used to move. But we have such enough to know we can move over and allow your gifts and allow you to dream and to be a support to that. And so that's what we intend to do. Ladies, do any one of you wanna speak to leadership in your area or to this community of uh, minorities and uh, people of color and, and how important it is for us today?
Okay, there are actually uh, dozens and dozens of styles of leadership. And like Mr. Lambert was saying, that the key first of all is to know yourself. Know uh, what makes you tick. Uh, what kind of styles, like, like he said, you gotta be a follower first. So the kind, identify those leadership styles that you worked in, that, that were more, more productive. Uh, identify the kind of leader that had a buy-in from all of the people that were working under him. Uh, mock those, mirror those uh, attributes that those leaders had. Uh, always utilize, I mean, there's all kinds of resources that you can tap into that will help you develop yourself as a leader. And like I said before, it's, it's not really about the position that you're in, it's where you want to go. So always keep that vision in front of you. Uh, somebody mentioned earlier, and I don't wanna get to talking cuz yeah, I could be here a long time. But uh, somebody mentioned uh, uh, something that, that made me think about an initiative that is going on, I know here in Pine Bluff, that the community that I live in. And I believe it's statewide where they are, Ms. Campbell, you probably are familiar, may be familiar with this. Where a local industry is uh, tapping our high school students uh, with opportunities to learn equipment. We have companies that are actually put, physically putting their machinery on the campuses so that the students can learn how to operate the equipment. I have some, uh, and I know, I, I get it that everybody is not, as they say, quote unquote, college material. But I have an issue with that because my question is, who is making the decision? If you throw a twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar a year job in front of a seventeen, eighteen-year-old and then say, take this or go to college for four years and possibly end up with a student loan, what do you think they're going to take? And I think that there's a lot of factors. And there's nothing wrong, don't get me wrong, there's nothing wrong with working in manufacturing. Uh, I worked in manufacturing from a management standpoint. But I saw a lot of people who started when they were seventeen, eighteen years old, worked their entire lives on that production floor and walked out with nothing. I mean, all the dreams and visions that they had go home with them and more than likely are put in the ground when they are buried. So that's not something that we want to do. Always keep your vision and make leadership your goal. I mean, when, when, and people will identify you, like what I was saying earlier, when you participate in those committees and teams, have input, do research about what they're working on. Be able to speak up, exert yourself to the point that people will identify you as that potential leader in that organization. And then make the steps toward developing yourself today.
Thank you, thank you so much. Wow, all of this information is very powerful. Uh, it makes me learn, you know, to sit up and take notice and do, do some different things and even share some things. I appreciate you all. Do we have anybody on the line tonight that have any questions for our guests or any comments at this time? Ms. Lambert just wrote, great session. We've got several people who are on our Facebook page who are enjoying this information. So when you guys get back, y'all go look at the uh, online comments cuz they're enjoying it. Do we have anybody who um, has any question? Well, I do wanna recognize that we have Ms. Wanda Neal and Ms. Diane Carey. Uh, Ms. Diane is a former president of the Little Rock uh, uh, NAACP. We appreciate her joining us tonight, um, all the way from Little Rock. And VP, our state VP, Ms. Wanda Neal from Pine Bluff is here and I thank you for your support. And I watched some more professionals come in. I do not want to go past them because we have a beautiful color of people who are here represented tonight. Marshelvia uh, Collins uh, is here. She's in real estate. Y'all, it's a plethora of uh, experts here on tonight. Um, I saw Ms. Joanne Lee, who is over DHS. Uh, I'm not sure which, sometime, oh, I think she's in Monticello. Yeah, she's in Monticello now. Uh, uh, she surely, surely all of these people had a story uh, that have joined up on tonight. And I just thank you guys so much for joining us, those who are online, who are uh, they are here, they have been enjoying it. I thank each and every one of you for being with us tonight. I do want to encourage any of you who are not a member of the Drew County NAACP sixty forty-two, and you may have been still asking that question, who are we? What are we about? Well, tonight you ought to be able to see what we are about and what we have been striving to do uh, for the last uh, few years and definitely the last few years of my leadership is to really cause our community to thrive, as our motto say, thrive in movement, in culture and in community. And Drew County Vision is bold, involved and equal. And so we have initiated a lot of bold things in this community to make a difference. We have made a difference in many, many areas uh, since we have been uh, going out before the public. So we invite you to become a member. Uh, you can go online at NAACP.org, become a member. Be sure to choose Drew County sixty forty-two branch. Uh, and I think it's gonna be sixty forty-two dash B. Be sure to choose that. It's thirty dollars a year. And then there are other options if you wanna become a Silver Life member and so forth, you can do that. And I have a one-time fee. You can go out there and read it, but go to NAACP.org. And listen, I thank each and every one of you for being here tonight with us. And uh, I'll be looking forward to you becoming a member too, so that you can bring your expertise to uh, the forefront to help our community. Now I'm gonna say our closing prayer and we'll be done for tonight. Father, we thank you for those who have joined us tonight. We thank you for this session. We thank you for this opportunity to be a blessing, Father God, to be a light, oh Father God, that sit on the hill that cannot be hidden. Father God, I pray, oh God, that your people of color will see the value in what it is that we are doing as a uh, as an organization, Father God, enough, oh Father God, that they will get involved, not just to watch, not just to spectate, but Father God, to truly come together in unity, Father God. For we realize that when we all come together as one, something happens. Change happens. And that's what we're looking for in Drew County, Monticello, and in southeast Arkansas. We are looking to be that change agent and we thank you for this opportunity. Protect us, keep us as we lead this line. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Thank God. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.